I would like to call the city. We urge planning commission for June 20, 2019 to order. Can I get a roll call of members, please?
Melissa Antle.
Present.
Will Kearns. Daniel Larson.
Here.
Janet Leo. Scott Ohm. Richard Peterson. Vivian Voss.
Present.
And Jahai Simbi is absent tonight. And if I can remind all you guys to press your button when you talk on your microphones, that would be great. Thank you.
The next word on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, call for vote.
Motion passed. Oh, there we go. Motion passed seven to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for June 6, 2019?
I have a couple of comments before we approve them.
I think first we will, let's, we'll approve the minutes and then, and then when, after we do the second, then I'll ask if there's any additions or corrections.
Pardon?
I move that we approve the minutes of June 6, 2019 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any additions or corrections?
Yes. Yes, let me get to the page. Just a couple of clarifications I noticed. On page 10, at the very bottom, right below, the paragraph below that says motion denied, it says there was a discussion about it from friendly amendment to add a deceleration lane on 44th. I guess I would like that to be reworded. It wasn't proposing a traffic study. I was saying that we shouldn't add this as an amendment until we have a better understanding if a lane would be needed as a result of this project. A traffic study is a very specific thing as opposed to just trying to understand what type of traffic would be associated with this project.
We can modify that to say without doing additional traffic analysis.
Okay.
More general. Thanks.
And then again on 11, at the top of the page, the first paragraph at, or the bottom of the first paragraph, I guess I would like that clarified. The point I was trying to make is that in a situation like this where we had essentially one development, but it was presented to us as two different cases. I think it would be nice to have staff reports present like a more comprehensive view of the projects when they're essentially part of the same development or project, you know? So we're getting an understanding of the pattern of development and what that looks like as opposed to just because one's a subdivision regulation, one's a zone change, we don't know anything about how they're connected.
Sure. Yeah, we, so we've had some discussion about that lately as well. And they are two different properties, two different zonings, two different owners, same developer, same representatives. But because they have that independence, we have to understand how they relate, but they each sort of merit their own procedural due process. So it is, it is sort of an interesting, it's unique to have two things in such parallel tracks and have potentially a physical connection between the two. But that's why we have been treating them as, they are two independent projects and we have to understand how they relate.
Any other additions or corrections?
So is she getting any change to paragraph one on 11? Are we voting on any change or accepting any change? Or is it just, you want a clarification?
Well, I mean, I would like it to be corrected.
To what?
To, I, I mean, I guess to at least reflect that we are trying to get a more comprehensive view of projects when they are related and maybe this was a unique situation.
But to just maybe provide that detail in the staff report.
Okay. So you're requesting to modify the last sentence of the first paragraph on page 11 to have additional information in the staff report related to the surrounding context?
Sure.
Okay.
That would be good.
Are the commissioners that were the first and second approve of that?
Let me ask again on, there was discussion about a friendly amendment to add a deceleration lane on 44th Avenue. And Melissa, you wanted to reword that in what way?
I have it noted as without staff doing additional traffic analysis.
Got it.
In a more generic way.
All right.
So we're all in agreement? Okay. Call for a vote.
Motion passed six to zero with one abstaining.
Okay. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on tonight's agenda, which are two cases for the Creekside Homes. Is there anybody that signed up to speak?
Not on this list.
I will, that will conclude the public forum.
Yes.
Did you, sir, did you wish to speak on any item that is not the Creekside Homes? That's, that's the Cree, yes, that's the Creekside Home project. Oh, the road itself, okay. If you want to speak on, on just the road itself, you can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Yeah, and we'll give you three, three minutes.
My name's Terry Railton. I'm, I have a building at 4615 Sims. And it's just, has to do with just all the development in the area and 44th and Tabor is being taxed. And there isn't an ability to leave the area due to the fact that we don't have any stoplights. And I realize that there's a very close stoplight to 44th and, and, but the fact is, is we're not letting any traffic out. And we're doing all this developing in the area and we're not taking care of the communities. And we need to do that comprehensive, you know, what they were, you were talking about, just, you know, about that deceleration thing on 44th. We do need to do that study because the state's not going to listen to anything unless you do the whole neighborhood, the whole community, going all the way up to 52nd. And, you know, no one can get, no one can go any which way. They, they can't even, you haven't got a, two lanes coming into 44th from north on Tabor. So how is anybody going to get in, out of that stop and go light? I mean, stop sign. You can't get on the 44th going left and you're going to be blocked by going right to get onto 70. And we need a stoplight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to have staff respond to that, the traffic study on 44th and going north to 52nd?
We don't often respond to public forum comments.
What's that?
We don't typically respond to public forum comments, but we can, I know Mr. Railton, so we can, we can communicate. I said we don't often respond during the public forum, but Mr. Railton and I have spoken before, so I'm happy to do that also in the office if we need to.
I would, so we were, we're going to hold off on responding to those comments, correct?
Right, yeah. During public forum, it can be on any topic, so we can, staff will follow up.
Is there anybody, is there anybody else that wishes to speak from the audience? Okay, that will conclude the public forum. Let's move on to the case. I opened up the public hearing for case number WZ-18-19. An application filed by Creekside Homes for approval of a specific development plan for 26 townhomes for property-zoned planned residential development, PRD, and located at 44, 4440 Tabor Street. Did we also want to open the next one at the same time? Okay. And we'd also like to open up case number WS-18-03, an application filed by Creekside Homes for approval of a major subdivision for property-zone planned residential development and located at 4440 Tabor Street and ask for the staff report. And prior to that, I need to start by swearing anybody who plans to speak with applicant, staff, and anyone from the public who plans to testify or comment, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter as you know it?
Yes.
And that's for the staff report.
Staff report is here. My name is Scott Cutler. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. We're here to hear case numbers WZ-18-19 and WS-18-03, which is approval of a specific development plan with a major subdivision. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the subdivision regulations, and this presentation. Properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear the case.
So none.
So this is a 2018 aerial view of the property. I actually have the incorrect address on there. It's 4440 Tabor Street. It's about 2.09 acres. It's vacant, and it's just east of Tabor and north of 44th Avenue. Surrounding area is a mix of uses. To the south are apartment buildings, single-family home, and then to the east are duplexes and triplexes on Sims Court. To the north are duplexes and then single-family homes, and then there's mostly commercial to the west of Tabor and south of 44th Avenue. Current zoning on the property is PRD, Planned Residential Development, and surrounding zonings include R3 to the south and northeast, R2 to the north, and MUN and C1 to the west. So the variety of zone districts in the area reflect the variety of uses. The request this evening is 26 for sale townhome lots across five buildings, which are allowed under the approved ODP, the outlined development plan. That outlined development plan was approved by city council on April 8, 2019, and was previously recommended for approval by Planning Commission to city council. The SDP is the second step in the process for a planned development, the purpose of which is to review the site design for compliance with the ODP. And the major subdivision is needed to sell the lots separately as townhomes as opposed to condos or apartments which do not require a major plot. So there's 26 for sale townhomes, two stories with pitched roofs, alley-loaded units, and then four commonly maintained tracts, and I'll get into those in just a minute. There's a small right-of-way dedication along the frontage of Tabor Street, and the plot also accounts for utility easements and drainage easements. So this is a zoomed-in version of the site plan. The SDP is 11-page document, and the site plan is on page two. The staff report goes into much greater detail about the site plan, but I'll quickly describe some main features. Site's L-shaped and will be assessed via a primary entrance drive that connects to Tabor Street. 18 units will be north of the drive, and six units will be south of the drive in four plexes. As I said earlier, each unit is alley-loaded, and then the front doors face landscaped areas or the street, and each unit will have private patio space. Site is proposed to connect to the development to the southeast, and guest parking is provided along the entrance drive as well as in a small parking lot at the southeast corner. Each unit also has a two-car garage. Present the plat in just a minute, which will show the lot lines, common areas, right-of-way dedication, and drainage. This is a landscape plan. It is probably a little bit hard to read on this screen. There's a larger version in the staff report. It includes street trees along Tabor Street in the tree lawn that will be constructed with this project. Site has about 30% landscaping coverage, including a larger amenity area in the southeast corner with a proposed pergola, grill, and race planar beds. This area will connect to a similar area on the adjacent development. 20-foot landscape buffers are around the site on the north, south, and southwest sides, and a landscape patio is between the two northeastern buildings, acting as a green area while also allowing pedestrian connections to those units. A dog-walking path with a small trail is located at the north of the site, and then fencing will be located along all property lines. These are some elevations of the buildings proposed. The black and white ones are from the staff report and are also a little bit larger in there. It is a two-story construction with some pitched roofs, and then elevations for each type of building are provided on pages nine and 10. City does require variation in front facades with a variation in materials, windows, and roof style, so the units can't just be uniform on the front. And each unit will be assessed from a two-car garage, but will also have a front door with a front patio in front or on the side. And in units will actually be assessed, accessed from the side of the building, which will activate the side facades. Often townhome projects have blank walls on the side, and this actually will have front doors as well as windows and material variation. Maximum height is 30 feet, and all buildings are at or well under the 30-feet maximum height limit. Most portions of the building are closer to 25 feet in height. This is a closer view of the plat. So there's five groups of townhome lots that are outlined in orange. These lots include building and then the private, private front patio areas. And then the rest of the subdivision is commonly maintained by the HOA in tracts, including drives, landscaped areas, and drainage. Landscape areas are generally outlined in green, although there are some smaller areas that are not outlined. And then the drainage tract is located along the east of the eastern alley and is surrounded by landscaping as well. Five feet of right-of-way is being dedicated along Tabor Street, and that's to accommodate sidewalks, landscaped amenity zone with street trees, and additional pavement on Tabor Street, which is considered substandard. And then the remaining pages of the plats are provided in the staff report. A lot of that goes into easements for sanitary and drainage, water utilities, and fire access. So traffic. On page four of the staff report, I provided a summary of the trip generation analysis provided by the applicant and then performed again and summarized by Public Works. Traffic analysis assumes the 25 units on this site plus the potential 18 units on the adjacent development that may have access through the site for a maximum potential of 44 units. The trip generation analysis from Public Works is attached as well as the full report from the analysis. And that report also shows a draft site plan showing how the two sites could interface. An estimated maximum 16 trips during the peak hour would be generated, which would be further distributed among the two entrances. These are well below the standards for just one entrance, and in this case, the developments would have two entrances. And because of this, Public Works concurs with the trip generation analysis provided by the applicant, and it would not be appropriate to request auxiliary turn lanes for this development. It should also be noted that additional pavement is going to be added to Tabor Street as part of this project as well as sidewalks. And then this same information will also be provided at the July 18 public hearing for the adjacent property. So city council approved the rezoning of the property to PRD on April 8, 2019 with an outlined development plan. This SDP and plat are based on the standards approved under that zoning, the ODP. And since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we did send a full referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation. They had no concerns and worked with the applicant to develop an approvable utility plan. Public Works and Planning have also found the SDP and plat to be approvable from a code standpoint, and Public Works is continuing to review the remaining civil construction drawings. There's also posting for the property. 15 days' letters were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius as a standard, and we did not receive any contact from surrounding property owners or residents. So in this instance, we're reviewing two land use cases, and there will be separate motions required for each. First is the SDP, the specific development plan, which is the site plan, elevations, landscaping. Staff has concluded that the request is in compliance with the approved ODP, consistent with the purposes of a planned development, and all agencies can serve the property, so it will allow the development of the site as presented this evening. For all those reasons, we are recommending approval of the request, and recommended conditions of approval are provided in the staff report, and in this instance, Planning Commission is the final deciding body for the SDP. For the plat, staff has concluded the request meets the subdivision regulations, and all agencies can serve the property. It allows the development as a site as proposed through the, as approved through the ODP and as proposed through the SDP to proceed. And Planning Commission in this instance makes just a recommendation to city council, which is the final deciding body. But for the reasons I gave above, staff is recommending approval of this request, and recommended conditions of approval are provided in the staff report. Again, two motions are required, first for the SDP and then for the plat because they're two separate cases and recommendations. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant is also available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
No questions.
Commissioner Antle?
No, not at this time.
Commissioner Larson?
No questions.
Commissioner Voss?
If you could explain the four-foot bike lane where it is on the property, I think it's on Tabor?
It is. I'm actually going to defer that question potentially to Public Works.
Okay.
Jordan may be able to answer that better than I can.
Can we go to a slide?
Sure. That might be the best view.
Yeah, so it's just going to be along Tabor, on the east side of Tabor?
So it's four foot wide, how long?
It's just going to span the distance, the, this property frontage in the future, you know? There may be widen, additional widening of Tabor, and at that point, we'll continue to build the bike lane. Or if there's other properties that develop adjacent to this, they'll be required to, you know, add pavement as necessary to continue that bike lane.
All right, so you're having a bike lane four foot wide.
Won't function as a bike lane at this moment, so we have to dedicate the space so that they build the curb at the future location. But if you've been on Tabor closer to the TOD area where the city did a project, that's the full section that we're going for on Tabor here, where it has a bike lane on both sides in each direction. So that's our goal on this portion of Tabor as well, and while we have the opportunity to get that dedication from the developer, we're taking it, but it won't function as a bike lane just for the duration of this frontage in the short term.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have the four-foot wide bike lane and then a tree lane and then the walk sidewalk?
Correct.
Is that the order in which they go? And then the only reason we're putting in the extra cement for the bike lane is so that it can be a further continuation up to the TOD?
In the future.
In the future, right. That's the purpose of this now.
Yeah, yeah, we just, with this type of investment, we want to get the curb and gutter in that future location, so we don't have to, you know, it's not throwaway. We get it right now.
So a lot of that property then right-of-way is going to be taken just for that 10-foot, 16-foot, whatever you're starting here. You're going to move it all the way north with that same dimensions?
Eventually.
Right. And that, having driven that and seen that, that's some right-of-way taking that you're going to do with those properties that are further north then, correct?
Yeah, I mean, all, almost every street frankly in the city is substandard, so anytime we have development, we look at what the future cross-section is designed to be and get that dedication with development. There's not a timeline for the rest of Tabor that I'm aware of. You, yeah. But, but that, now's the time to get that land dedication. There's maybe three properties on this section of Tabor where we've obtained the right-of-way. So it's not built that way, but we actually have wider right-of-way than what the road appears to be right now.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Kearns?
Does the city of Wheat Ridge charge a traffic impact fee that would go towards a future traffic signal at 44th and Tabor?
No.
No. Okay, because what we just heard is that the 44th and Tabor intersection is overtaxed. And the, even though the traffic, the traffic generation analysis doesn't call for any specific site improvements other than a center turn lane on Tabor, this isn't, this isn't addressing the, the impact to 44th and Tabor, which is the main problem, as I understand, is we're adding 322 total trips per day to this intersection, and it's a stop sign.
Which is negligible based on the total volumes, but maybe Jordan can speak to some of the traffic analysis?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not sure that this is, there's actually been a decrease in the level of service at that intersection. We need to take a look at it. Public Works does have plans to get some counts at that intersection and take a look with all the development going on in the area. And I'm not sure what the status is of that. I think we've actually initiated the counts, but the fact is that this specific development will have a negligible impact on that intersection. You know, it's, I think it's, it's like 17 trips in the peak hour, so really when you factor that into the total traffic, this isn't really impacting the intersection. It's not enough to drop the level of service of the intersection.
Okay.
But like I said, Public Works will be taking a look at that intersection soon. We have had a few complaints.
So when the intersection does meet warrants for a signal, who pays for the signal? Is it the city of Wheat Ridge?
Most likely, yes.
But the city of Wheat Ridge does not charge developers a traffic impact fee to help pay for this stuff?
So that'd be a policy question with city council. We don't, we don't have a school impact fee, we don't have a traffic impact fee, we don't have a stormwater impact fee. We are.
Do the parks, the parks have a?
We have long had a fee in lieu of parkland dedication, and we've more recently had the fee in lieu of streetscape construction. So those are the only two from, I mean, historically, it's the kind of question you could raise with your council member. Historically, Wheat Ridge has been sort of a least restrictive, sort of open-for-business community where we have far fewer requirements for new development compared to some of the greenfield communities where they really depend on a traffic impact fee as they're building out their infrastructure. We have, our road infrastructure was largely here. Is it adequate in terms of signalization? Potentially not, based on, you know, the growth that we've seen, but that's not been the policy direction that we've had here in Wheat Ridge in terms of traffic impact fees.
This Tabor Street is going to connect to the new, actually the existing commuter rail end-of-line, which would also carry. rail end-of-line, which would also carry, or could carry some traffic, some transit-oriented development, so it seems like eventually this, this intersection is going to meet a, a signal warrant. But if, if we can't collect a traffic impact fee, then there's nothing we can do, so, for now. So I have no other questions.
Ken, I have a couple of questions. Since Tabor is an existing collective street, the streetscape manual applies, correct?
It does.
Does the city have a minimum separation from trees to water lines?
We, the city doesn't. The Water District reviews, reviews that, but most of our lines are not usually under the streetscape, as I understand it. It's either in the roadway, where we have this now addition of width, or under the sidewalk.
So if the trees or roots break the water lines, who's, who's to pay? The city or the developer?
The developer will be responsible for maintenance of all of that landscaping, so they'd be responsible.
On the, in the landscape plan that's before us tonight, is, all the trees are listed as a two-inch caliper. It does not meet the requirements of the streetscape design manual, a two-and-a-half-inch caliper, correct?
So there's a difference between an onsite tree, which would meet the city's requirement of two inches, versus a street tree, which is in the public right-of-way?
Right, I'm, I'm talking specifically along Tabor Street for this project.
If the cal, if the caliper's incorrect, we can make that a condition of approval. I'm not certain on what it is on the schedule.
Also, per the streetscape design manual, trees with a mature height over forty-five feet, such as the honey locust, which is shown as a symbol S H L, are to be spaced at a minimum of thirty feet, whereas they appear to be shown on the plan fifteen feet to the next tree.
So there are some trees on there that are closer. The actual large trees are thirty feet plus apart, and then you have kind of...
Not, not from, not from another tree, they're not?
Yes, so the large trees are at thirty feet plus apart. Then there's like the understory, smaller trees that are closer than that. And our, our code actually does allow for trees as close as fifteen feet apart if they're smaller.
Okay. One question I have on the ornamental trees. So the Japanese lilac, which is in the streetscape, is shown as a height of fifteen feet to twenty-five feet. In the streetscape manual, four-point-one, Maintenance B, what I don't understand is how that fifteen-to-twenty-five-foot height is going to work when it says that proper clearances above sidewalks and streets establish an section, three-point-three street trees, minimum eight feet on the pedestrian sides. That means that your fifteen-foot tree is going to get whacked eight foot off the ground, and then on the street side is going to get whacked fourteen feet. I'm trying to understand how that ornamental tree is going to look.
I'm not sure exactly what you're reading from, but if you've got a question about the species selection, maybe we could ask the applicant?
It's, it's the streetscape manual is what I'm referring to, the four-point-one Maintenance B. It talks about, I typically don't see ornamental trees in the streetscape because you need that eight-feet clearance, so you don't have the liability of someone walking into branches.
Sure.
So you typically have streetscape, streetscape trees, which are large deciduous canopy trees, which are spaced at a minimum of thirty feet on center.
And the change in the species of a tree is an appropriate request?
Well, it's going to read, also, changing it would also decrease the number of trees along the streetscape. So I'm not sure if, if there is an issue with not finding real estate for the trees, and so all the trees got loaded onto Tabor at fifteen feet on center.
Maybe if it's a design question, maybe we can ask the applicant how they chose that selection, and if you have a, if you'd like to see a different mix or spacing of, of trees, that's something that can be...
Right.
...a condition of approval.
My question right now is just whether or not it meets the streetscape criteria manual.
Yes, we, so we didn't, staff didn't have a concern with it, and forestry didn't have a concern with it.
Okay. I have no further questions. Is there any other questions for staff?
I do.
I just, these are, these are more about clarification than anything, clarification for me. There's been a lot of talk about car traffic, but I'm a walker and a biker, and so I'm curious, is, is there an easy access to the Clear Creek Trail from this project?
I'm trying to think of the shortest route, and I, I know it's obviously south of Forty-Fourth, but I don't know the exact street that you would access. There are rapid flashing beacons to cross Forty-Fourth from the site.
For, crossing Forty-Fourth on your, on foot could be probably an interesting TV series.
I've done it.
I think it would have a very, very dramatic title.
There's a light just a little bit to the west.
There is as well.
There's like a, the Hines, the Hines Market right there, there's a street light right there.
But, but how do you get, how can you get from there to the Clear Creek Trail?
I take the Clear Creek Trail a lot, and I can tell you that you'd have to, once you cross that light, it's actually on the other side, there's like a lake, there's like a, I think there might be a hotel right there, yeah, and you'd have to go probably all the way to Prospect Park.
Right.
And then you could, you'd get access to Clear Creek Trail, would be my understanding, because it's all fenced off.
So it's kind of convoluted, actually. So, so I'm just looking at the development that's taking place north of Forty-Fourth and, and wondering where they're going to go. Does it go for a nice walk?
Yeah, I mean, this board saw the vision document for the TOD area, and I would say the number one comment we got, not only from the Planning Commission, but also from City Council and the public, was how do you connect the TOD to Clear Creek Trail, and how do you connect it to the Clear Creek Crossing? So we know the biggest pinch point, actually, between that is the bridge over the interstate, where it's the, the Tabor Street Bridge, where you can't get a bike lane or a really comfortable sidewalk condition. We're well aware that, I believe that bridge is going to be up for structural review from CDOT for a while, so we're hopeful that maybe we can scab something on there. It's part of the reason we're trying to get this dedication on Tabor, and very well aware that we need to improve that connection crossing Forty-Fourth Avenue.
Because e- even having the bike lane on Tabor, when you get to Forty-Fourth...
Then what?
Yeah, then what?
Yeah. I think, and Scott, you may know better than me, because I don't use this as often, I think you can go to the end of Tabor, and there's sort of a social trail connection to Clear Creek. The formal connection would be through Prospect Park, but yeah, that is sort of out of the way as a, as a pedestrian travels.
There, you, you could, yeah, I think there is a little, there is a tiny, private, very, very narrow street, you're right, that you could...
Right.
...access.
Tabor is significantly substandard south of Forty-Fourth, so it doesn't feel like a public street, but it is, and goes all the way down there.
Yeah, so, so people are at least talking about access...
Yes.
...to these places.
Yes. It was a number, I mean, we had a vision plan focused very much on the TOD area, and the number one comment was, how do you get to Clear Creek Trail from the TOD?
Right.
Yeah.
That's it.
Any other questions for staff? Yes.
Um, so I'm spinning with this whole traffic issue, and this is not just this development, this is all the developments being, we've been listening to, is the citizens are coming in, and that's their biggest complaint. And we seem to be ignoring it, and I don't care if it's the future that's going to correct it, because these people are living with this now, not two years from now, five years from now, let alone construction that's going on and all the trucks and that come in and out. And we've been cautioned not to believe everything that you read. And so this chip, trip generation report, at the very beginning of it, it says, keep in mind, these rates are applicable to vehicles entering at one specific entrance. And then you go down after the graph, and it says, so the trips would be split up amongst the two entrances. And to me, you're talking apples and oranges there on this, because I don't understand this trip generation, other than someone spilling sixteen versus twenty-two at different times, and I don't know why peak level is so much more important than just twenty-four hours. Traffic is that. I'm just thinking that we need to do better and more at every development site, based on common sense tells us there's traffic problems. And I just don't want us to depend on a one-page traffic report when live it, and it's a whole lot different. That would just be my comment on that.
I think staff would like to address that. Jordan, you want to go first?
So yeah, you know, we used the standard methods that are standard engineering practice to kind of analyze this. That's, you know, how everybody does it, basically, throughout the country. Anybody could take a look at this, it's a very prescriptive method. You have a handbook, and you could, you know, ten different engineers could look at this, and they'd all come to the same result. And, and that's just kind of how traffic is analyzed. You know, it's as much of an art as it is a science, but, you know, people have a visceral reaction. Nobody wants one more car on their street, you know, but when you kind of step back and analyze this, you know, it, it's really, it, it just doesn't warrant a light or anything at this point, because you have to factor in the volumes of traffic, existing traffic. So, you know, sixteen trips in an hour is kind of just a drop in the bucket. And like I said, staff does intend to take a closer look at Forty-Fourth and Tabor. I think initially, we wanted to wait until some of these develops happened up in the TOD area, so we could get a better idea of the counts, but I think we're accelerating that. I know we're collecting some data, I think, this summer, counts in the area. But yeah, you know, it's, it may seem kind of like voodoo, but it's, it's a standard engineering practice, and it's been proven to, to yield good results.
And maybe just an answer to your question about peak hour. So there is an increase in traffic, there's more units, but it's not an increase beyond what we know to be the capacity of those roadways, and that's when we'll start doing something, and we're, we're, that's what we do, the, the traffic volume test, to understand what is the actual volumes versus the capacity of the roads. And we do, we focus on the peak hour analysis, because that is generally considered to be the worst-case scenario. So when, during the day, is there going to be the most volume either generated or, or adjacent on that roadway? So that's specifically why we're looking at that volume.
Well, I still think you're putting the cart before the horse, and the fact that you're doing the development, and then we'll look at this down the road, and everybody else. I'm a citizen, I have to drive all these same streets, everybody else does, and more development means more traffic, and we have to, I think we really need to take into consideration more than just a one-page traffic study report, and I don't know what that would be, but I would just caution that we think about that, and we give some major consideration to the people that are living in this area, that actually experience it day-to-day, minute-to-minute, and have voiced here their complaints about what they're having to deal with. Thank you. Microphone?
Sorry. A possible solution is to start charging a traffic impact fee to developers. And what this is, is it's a fee based on how many units are going in, and it goes into a fund that then pays for, helps pay for the signal, once the signal, the traffic signal is warranted at Forty-Fourth and Tabor. Currently, a traffic impact fee doesn't exist in the city of Wheat Ridge, but it does exist at Jeffco. Jeffco charges traffic impact fees for new development. So this could be a mechanism to help make development pay its own way, instead of having the citizens of Wheat Ridge paying for the traffic signals that are going in as a result of the new development. So I don't know if that's the only mechanism to, that exists, but I know that it does exist.
The case tonight is a property that has the zoning in place that allows a certain density, so I would urge you to focus on the case at hand, which is a site plan and a subdivision for a use that's already permitted. It's a good policy question, but I think we need to look at that independently from the land use case. It wouldn't be an appropriate condition of approval, just given the rough proportionality test of the number of units being presented tonight to the traffic generated. Very appropriate to, maybe has a, a conversation at a policy level with council. Yeah, yeah.
I have one last question. On the photometric plan, there appears to be a small amount of light spillage outside of the property on the south side. Does the city have a zero tolerance, or do they have kind of a threshold of what is allowable light spillage outside of the property?
So it's not a zero tolerance, and it's also, having looked at that section of the report, it's one percentage decimal point above zero, so it's a very insignificant amount. And, and, and from the city's perspective, one, there will be fencing in place. A lot of times, those studies don't actually take into account topography or fencing or landscaping, and the other is that, again, it's not a zero tolerance policy, it's not being able to view the source of the light, and, and so there's, there's a little bit of leeway in terms of, a site can never be fully self-contained, but in this case, they're meeting the intent of that requirement quite well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions to staff? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Koller. Let's hear from the applicant.
Okay, unless there are any questions? I have some questions here. If you could state your name and address for the record?
Name is Stephen Sundberg, address is ninety-six forty West Chatfield Avenue, Littleton, Colorado.
Let's start with Commissioner Peterson? Commissioner Antle?
No questions.
Commissioner Larson?
No questions.
Commissioner Voss?
I do. I would, this is new here, and I think we need to find out, with all the development that's going on in Wheat Ridge, I would be asking you, as a developer, how did you, what was your method in data collected so that you knew if you could build these, what is, twenty-six units, that they would be sold? And once you answer that, what is your timeline for these units being sold in your estimation?
Sure. So overall, I couldn't really answer the question on the marketing side. We do have different teams for different portions. I do work for the company, I'm not the owner of the company, but that being said, we've gone through thorough evaluations for the locations. We've done this in Lakewood, similar kind of developments, actually, the same product. Short of that, though, that's kind of the extent that we do a due diligence period at the beginning of the process, before we start an application. We are under contract and work our way through the approvals to make sure it does work. From a standpoint of construction, though, we do look forward to getting started as soon as possible. We would like to start on the Riverside side, was the goal, but that may have changed just a little bit, so depending on how everything kind of shakes out timeline-wise, I couldn't give you an answer specifically as to a start date, but we do look to start at least three of the buildings right off the bat, and then the last two on that property would be governed by sales.
And so how soon do you anticipate that units would be sold or move in?
Sure, we, we look forward to get started as soon as possible, to try to beat the winter period for some of those exact reasons, and typically, we see it about six to seven months on this townhome product.
And if you don't have buyers by that time, you continue building, you continue the whole project, and just wait for the, them to come?
There is a, you know, a certain number that the builder, the bank, and everyone works out between the investor groups, that they would be comfortable building to a certain extent, a number of spec homes that are allowed. I don't have the exact numbers of those, but they do have some of that worked out. In terms of several of the last two buildings, they are somewhat governed by sales, but we're saving some of the last two, because it's right next to the park amenities and some of the other things. So we look forward to completing the construction overall through the site in one quick phase as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Liam?
Nothing.
Commissioner Kearns?
Nothing.
I got some small questions, some bigger ones. So on the north side of the project, there's a dog path, but what's interesting is that, and I think that's a great idea, but what's interesting is that it, it's a, looks like a crusher fine, which is great, but it doesn't connect to the sidewalk. It just, I think it just, there, there's grass in that area. Is that because it wouldn't be compliant with ADA, and so there's a separation?
I believe the intent of those, where they were somewhat back-to-back to some of the access sidewalk there, so you could actually go through the common place to get to it. Now, there's not a direct connection, but I don't believe the grades would dictate anything otherwise, but...
Okay.
And that is something we've kind of taken from some of our other developments. We've had homeowners move in and not really had dog areas, and then the landscaping suffers, so we're trying to accommodate both sides of that.
Kind of a balance, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And then on the south side, I noticed that there's a proposed drainage swell, but the landscape plan is showing trees directly, and shrubs directly in the middle of that I'm a little concerned that that's going to impede the flow. Is that a fair assessment? Is that a fair assessment?
You know, I couldn't say specifically. I assume you're talking about the southern and...
The southern, goes east-west?
Sure. Now, I do know that those swales were more or less put in as a precautionary measure because we couldn't dam up the drainage from the other sides. We are taking their storm water from some of the other properties. When it comes to the vegetation, I apologize, I'm not quite sure as to where the location is or how that would work with the drainage, but I do believe it's been, you know, reviewed and confirmed that it would be acceptable, but I could be mistaken.
And then it appears that there's three trees along Tabor that are directly on top of your proposed water lines. What is the generally accepted industry standard for horizontal separation of trees to water lines?
In my understanding, I want to say it's probably five to seven feet. I couldn't say exactly what it is. What I can tell you is the document up there, you know, being the, not a specific construction plan, my first concern was that's way too many taps on the street. So they would be consolidated into one area and come through and we can very well locate them between trees.
Okay. I have no further questions. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Are there any citizens that wish to speak? None? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Terry Railton, forty-six fifteen Sims. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I am. The thing is, is I've heard comments, some good comments and some put your hand over one eye comments. You know, you keep doing the development in the area and great thing, yes, impact fees. We should have been doing it on Jolly Rancher. We should have been doing it in a lot of places. Where's the money going to come from? The state's going to beat us up on it over on Ward. But this whole area, if you, you have to do a study on the whole area. Then ZDOT will listen. You sit there and do this hand over one eye and even said that you were going to do another study in the summertime. Schools are out in the summer. Schools are choking us to death. They're not helping the situation. You have to do a more of a study and start even back up to Jolly Rancher and get impact fees. It's exactly right what we need to do, whether we can put them in now or not, start collecting the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to talk? Are you from the public or are you with the applicant?
I have no real interest.
Okay.
Other than I would involve...
Yeah, please come, okay. Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Maxwell Markham. I'm at six-nine-eight-three Seacrest Court in Arvada, Colorado. And my office is actually located on the I-70 Frontage Road, just on the other side of Tabor where the Wheat Ridge Industrial Park is. I just wanted to add that this is a development that I myself, whom twenty-four years old next week, am very excited about because this is a product that I would need and want. It's an affordable product that looks out for somebody my age who maybe doesn't have the affordability but wants to stay on the west side of town. I was born and raised in the Arvada area. I live two blocks down from the home I grew up in, so. And in regards to impact fees as well, one thing I want to caution is that with impact fees, they genuinely, they generally, when they're assessed by the developer, the developer has to take on that cost. And when they take on that cost, they typically beat up the property owner that they're purchasing from on that price. So it may help from a traffic perspective or creating some sort of income generation, but typically for the property owner that it's being purchased from, it devalues their land because the impact fees are associated with that development. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if we want to, we've already talked a lot about the traffic study. I don't know if we need to discuss that in any further detail, but feel free if you want to.
I don't think I have anything additional to add.
Okay.
Thanks.
Same. I will close the, seeing no other persons in the audience, from the public, I will close the citizens forum. Commissioner Boss, you said you had one more comment, question for staff?
I, I thought about another question for the applicant, too, if I could, real quick.
Which applicant?
The buffer that you're building that specifically says to hide, I'm not sure what the wording is, the property across the street. What is the reasoning behind that? What are you concerned with or...
I apologize, I might not understand the question.
Do you remember reading that? It seemed to, there's some description, and I don't have it marked, that you were going to do a buffer of land. It didn't say a burn or anything, but a buffer that specifically said to protect the view or something like that from the property across the street on the other side of Tabor. And I'm just wondering what the concern was with that property that you would such...
I don't recall that being stated or put in anything, but I do know, you know, for the most part, we do have the setbacks that are somewhat dependent on building height and vegetation that ties into both of those to provide the buffers. Unfortunately, I couldn't give you more than that. I don't agree or don't understand the...
Okay. Here it is, I found it. Page three, landscaping. A twenty-foot landscape buffer is also provided on the west side of the L to buffer the southern units from the forty-four-thirty Tabor Street property to the west.
That is a single-family zoned house, so we're just providing a buffer more for them than for us, if anything. We have no issue with that house next door. There's going to be fencing and overall, the buffer would be for a lower-density residential versus high-density, I guess. I, again, couldn't say that for sure. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but I believe that's what it would associate.
So forty-four-thirty is the property to the south of the development?
That's correction. I can actually jump in here because that was something I wrote. So the ODP actually requires that to be a twenty-foot landscape buffer, so I just put that in there to alert you all that this, this proposed development was meeting that twenty-foot buffer requirement.
And I just assumed forty-four-thirty was across the street and what was the issue?
Okay. Yeah, no, it's the lot to the southwest.
All right. Thank you. And then I just had one question of staff.
I'll get on the...
Thank you. So back to my, how do these developers plan these and how do they know they're going to sell? What guarantee does the city have against a development that comes in and we've run out of people wanting to move to Wheat Ridge? Who knows when that would happen? But do we have any that are being built, that are vacant, that aren't being sold, that are having a tough time, like some houses are, that are on the market that are being sold?
We have not had that issue with any of the new units that have been built and sold since I've been here in the last eight and a half years. You know, with any subdivision, we always plan for a doomsday. So the subdivision improvement agreement that you require as a condition of approval is where we put in the protections for any future homeowner and for the city, namely to say that we have a financial guarantee and protection that the public improvements that would be required, that the development depends upon, would be built. So we, and we require phasing in such a way that, you know, if the economy tanks tomorrow and they build the first building, then the balance of the site can be stabilized or there's the sufficient amount of public improvements installed for what is built. So we put all of that logical sequencing and backstops and financial guarantees into that subdivision improvement agreement in preparation for sort of that worst-case scenario.
And nothing like that has happened so far?
Not so far, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff or the applicants? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion. This is for the, this is for the SDP.
Before you get started on that, I do, did you distribute, yeah, so Tammy distributed a revised motion for the second motion, which is for the subdivision, and that was just changing some language in the first sentence to reflect that you are, oh, I messed that up, actually. So, and actually, this recommended revised motion would be for the specific development plan, which is case number WZ eighteen nineteen. I apologize.
I'm a little confused, so the...
Did you see the paper as for eighteen nineteen?
That is correct. And there would actually be no conditions on that approval. So I apologize, I got the case number wrong. So when you see suggestion, suggested motion, specific development plan, in where it says option A, I move to recommend approval, we have requested that you change that, I move to approve. And that is because planning commission is the final deciding body for the specific development plan. The suggested motion for the subdivision would not change, and that's number nine in the staff report.
So we should, so on this one, it should say WZ-eighteen-nineteen, and then cross out the conditions below?
You can, you can just ignore the paper. So refer to your staff packet on page seven, and the only amendment would be relevant to the SDP. You're either approving or denying, but not recommending anything.
Oh, just cross out recommend?
Correct.
Yes.
For the specific development plan.
Tried to make that simpler and made it a little more complicated. Sorry about that.
So I moved, it'll be that one and then the subdivision, we take out...
The subdivision's written correctly where you'll be making a recommendation.
Leave the recommend?
Yeah.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve case WZ eighteen nineteen, a request for approval of a specific development plan on property located at four-four-four-zero Tabor Street and zoned planned residential development for the following reasons. First, the specific development plan is consistent with the proposal, with the purpose of a planned development as stated in section two-six dash three-oh-one of the city code. Second, the specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. Third, the proposed uses are consistent with those approved by the outlined development plan. Fourth, all responding agencies have indicated that they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. And fifth, the specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and with the city's adopted codes and policies.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we should, I don't know if we need to make a condition, but I think we should have something that, about the two-and-a-half-inch caliper, it's a minor correction. This does meet substantial compliance. I don't know if we need to make a condition that says all minor corrections occur prior to city council public hearing?
No hearing for the SDP.
Oh, for the SDP, so this would just be...
We can resolve it before building permit issuance.
Okay. Is that something we need to make a condition or can staff just take care of that?
We can take care of it, but whichever you're more comfortable with.
I'm, I'm fine with staff. Okay. Any other discussions for the SDP? Call for vote?
Motion passed, six to one.
Okay, now I would entertain a motion for the subdivision.
I move to recommend approval of case number WS eighteen oh-three, a request for approval of a major subdivision with right-of-way dedication for property-zoned planned residential development located at forty-four-forty Tabor Street for the following reasons. All agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's request. The plat will result in a logical layout consistent with the future development proposed by the specific development plan and will facilitate development consistent with the approved outlined development plan. And all requirements of the subdivision regulations, Article Four of the zoning and development code have been met with the following conditions. One, prior to recordation, the applicant shall pay the required fees in lieu of parkland dedication. Two, the developer shall enter into a subdivision improvement agreement and lotsale restriction covenant agreement prior to the recordation of the subdivision plat. And three, prior to issuance of building permits, the developer shall provide homeowners' association covenants for review and approval by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I've requested one correction on the reading. Item number one, installed at the developer's expense as opposed to request.
You stated, yeah, you stated request, not expense.
What did I say?
You said request, at the developer's request.
I misspoke.
Yeah, right here. Oh, I said, oh. So do I read that over?
No, I think it was, you read it, so we can say it was moved as written and then...
Moved as written, yes. Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? Call for vote?
Motion carries, six to zero with one deny.
Thank you. Okay, we are now on to old business. Is there any old business?
No old business.
Any new business?
No, the only new business that we thought we might suggest is that oftentimes, so we did our training now a couple of months ago, and once we have a few sort of cases under our belt, it's sometimes helpful to do a little follow-up discussion just since we've had some real-world practice. So we thought, I know I wasn't here at the June meeting, but I know there were some long and complicated discussions and proceedings. So having those examples and this example and just some opportunity to do a little bit of follow-up on any questions that may have arisen now that we've had the opportunity to review some cases. If that sounds good, then maybe we'll send out an email to do some polling on dates based, July fourth messes up your hearing schedule. You'd usually meet that day. So there's only one meeting date in July. We may be able to use that or see, poll the group to see if there's another Thursday evening that would make sense just for that sort of follow-up. We've seen that it's helpful, once you have sort of more real-world examples.
Oh, sorry. Are there cases scheduled for the second July or the July meeting?
The case that was continued from last meeting is on that July eighteenth night.
And I believe that's the only agenda item as well, unless something comes up in the next week, which I don't think there will be.
Could we adjourn to a study session after that case is heard?
Yes.
For selfish reasons, could I request a slightly different date since I won't be here the eighteenth? And I would like to participate in this discussion.
On other boards, I've used that, if you've used the doodle poll where we send out sort of a list of dates and you can identify where you're available or not and then we'll see what the best option is. So, yeah, we can, we can use that tool, find a date that works for everyone.
Even if we don't use the fourth, there might be another Thursday in there that we could...
Right, yep. The last Thursday of the month is sometimes the board of adjustment, but that second Thursday, I think it'd be the eleventh, would be an option, or we can, we can look at a few dates and send out a poll to see what works best for folks.
Okay. One comment I have is, in my profession, apart from making sure trees are not on top of water lines, the one thing I've seen in the past year or two is I'm having to deal with a new set of criteria and that is making sure I'm not creating areas for homeless, which is something kind of new. I don't know if staff has looked at that, but typically what happens is sometimes I've had a project, this is just something kind of, just something new that is an issue where, you know, I might have a retaining wall, you know, and then I thought like, okay, fine, I'll have a pine tree on the other side of that retaining wall, and now I've created this, this area inadvertently. And so it's something that I just wanted to point out that you have to get on the radar.
Yeah. Yeah, we, that's not specifically listed in our review worksheet, but we do see those sort of attractive nuisance areas and we do refer plans out to the police department who uses SEPTED, is it community?
Yes, crime prevention through environmental design, yes, like...
So they're usually looking at things from that perspective, too, illumination at entries and sort of where are these sort of hidden spots, yeah.
The other issue I see a lot, too, is just on the medians. The other issue I see a lot, too, is just on the medians. I hope that when the Wadsworth gets redeveloped, I think if there's a general perception that if it looks like a sidewalk in the median, it will be used as a sidewalk. And that, I hope that the design is very much non-sidewalk, because I've personally had some issues with having people in the median fall down in the meeting as I'm approaching them, which is, is kind of scary, you know? So...
Yeah. One thing, as part of this study session, could we, you know, like when you're doing the doodle poll, could we even propose a couple potential topics, like maybe reserve a little time? Like I talked, I can't remember if it was Scott or the planner that was here last time about maybe providing a little more understanding of park dedication fees and kind of what's the bigger picture?
That one's on our list.
Yeah, and it sounds like maybe a little more information about trip generation, you know, just things that are rules of thumbs that aren't necessarily part of the code, but that go into the analysis.
Yeah. I mean, I want you guys to feel like you have enough understanding of the tools and regulations so that you can trust us when we tell you the parks department doesn't want to park here, or, you know, this is the capacity or this is the trip generation. We're here to be your experts and you need the context to understand the information that we're giving you or the context within which the city adopted parkland dedication requirements. So that's a great, if you have any ideas or a topic you want to hear about, just email me when you think of it. But that specifically parkland dedication was on the list, and I was making a note about impact fees and whatnot. There's, there's lots of considerations, it's a huge policy decision, but it's not our, our decision to make.
Lauren, as commissioners, can we have our own study session that we're not needing any direction from staff on, we're just...
No.
No?
Nope.
So we could have one, but you would need to be present?
Yeah, it'd be a public meeting, we'd need to advertise for it, we'd need to be present, we'd need to videotape it.
Even a study session?
Yes.
And that does get to the point that I was hoping to bring up, and it's a request of staff. We can discuss this further at the meeting, but first thing would be sort of a procedural guideline, if there's something available and that you could share with us in terms of when we do not approve of a, of a motion that comes before us like we did last time, and we understand that there are some things that have to happen after that, and what was not clear was how we do that. And so part of the request is that we have at least maybe somebody at manager level at every meeting, so when these things come up again, we don't have to kind of go in circles trying to decide how we proceed.
Yeah.
Either something that we have in writing that we have access to or somebody of your experience or higher at the meeting.
Sure. Yeah, that's fair. I'm not, I don't pretend to be an expert at Robert's Rules of Order, but the more, more folks who are familiar with it, the better. Yeah, agreed. Anything else? I don't have anything else, new business.
Well, I might ask then, can we meet outside of council chambers as a group?
I'd have to check with the city attorney, not as a full board, that would not be permitted. If you, if you would like to meet with us, you can, if you've got, you know, I've met, I met with Dan the other day, had questions about code and noise, so any individual, I know we've met before with Vivian when we've had questions, but the planning commission cannot meet as the planning commission, aside from in this setting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, just comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Call for vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.